Okay, here we go. All town meeting members, please rise for the establishment of the quorum and the tellers to return to count. In the first division, Mrs. Tashiro. In the first division, Mrs. Tashiro. Thirty-nine. The third division, Mr. Hampson. Sixty-two. In the second division, Mr. Dufresne. Ninety-five. By a counted vote of one-hundred-and-ninety-six, we have a quorum and we're back in session. Chair will recognize Mr. Turkington.
Yep, I think we're gonna push the button in on the bottom. Do we lose our mic carrier?
Mr. Moderator. I move we reconsider Article One for the purpose of hearing a brief report by the Town's Water Quality and Management Committee.
Okay, Article One is reports, and the new information is I didn't put them on my list, so we went right through, so we need a vote to reconsider Article One so that we can hear the report, the brief report according to the chairman. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll ask the committee members who are present to join us down here. I promise it will be briefer than the planning board article was. All right, Eric Turkington, Precinct One, and Chairman of the Town Water Quality Management Committee. And I've asked the members of the committee who are here tonight to join me. The committee was appointed a little more than a year and a half ago, and we're here tonight to report on what we've been doing and how we've been doing it. Okay. At this point, there should be no question about what this is all about. The value of Falmouth estuaries. Falmouth has more estuaries than any other town in Massachusetts. They're the home to all kinds of marine life. They're a focal point of our communities. They're recreation for fishing, for boating, for beaching. Everything from Wacoit all the way up to Magansett. All these water bodies define our lives and define our communities. Our estuaries are in big trouble. And you only have to look at the map of Little Pond in 1950 and the map of Little Pond now. In 1950, you see on the Falmouth Heights side of Little Pond was practically uninhabited. The Maravista side, practically empty. And what there was mostly were small cottages. No, you can find one for me. Small cottages and lots of empty space. Up in the northern section there of Little Pond in 1950, what you see there is now Falmouth Mall. It used to be a cranberry bog. That's what we've done to this town in the last fifty years. The threats to the estuary and health are well-established at this point. Well-established at this point. Excess nitrogen is the main cause of the decline of our estuaries. And we know where it comes from. Septic systems, our own backyard septic systems, are the number-one source. Fertilizer, which we'll be talking about later tonight, is the number-two source. Road runoff, which goes right into the street drains and right into the estuaries, is the number-three source. At least three-quarters of the non-atmospheric nitrogen comes from septic systems. So septic systems are number-one. Why do you want to remove the nitrogen? Fish kills. This last summer, we had a fish kill in Little Pond. We've had them elsewhere. Loss of habitat. Algae blooms. You couldn't see the bottom of West Falmouth Harbor this year because of the algae. Loss of recreation. The shellfish industry, which used to be huge in this town, is diminished to one-tenth of what it used to be. Odors. Try it sometime in August in a good hot day in some of these estuaries. We, in April 2011, this town meeting unanimously passed Article Seventeen, which provided for $2.7 million to proceed on a two-track process. Part of it, the one track was for sewer design. The other track was alternative demonstration projects to find ways of treating nitrogen without sewer-ing. This body passed that unanimously. The voters passed it by a two-to-one margin at the ballot box with every single precinct in support. That never happens. That happened last year. This town meeting gave us a long list of mandates for this town to do. To form a committee, to draft a comprehensive wastewater management plan, to pursue the aquaculture demonstration project, to pursue the eco-toilet demonstration project, to pursue the denitrifying septic system, to pursue the permanently reactive barrier demonstration project. Road runoff. Fertilizer. Pond opening for Boines Pond and Little Pond. Engineering for design for a sewer. Oyster pond. Collect baseline data and fund studies of Quistah Harbor, Falmouth Harbor, and Salt Pond. A huge undertaking that this town meeting said this town is going to do. So we're doing it. First thing the selectmen appointed was the Water Quality Management Committee. I want to introduce to you, you know most of them, but introduce to you the ones who are here tonight. Matt Patrick. Ron Zweig, who is no stranger to this meeting. Steve Rafferty. Win Monroe. And Steve Leighton. Virginia Vallella has missed her first town meeting in forty years. She's in Argentina, but she's a member of the committee as well. So they appointed this committee, and the first thing we did was draft a comprehensive wastewater management plan. It took, it's taken this town five years to put a plan together. We put a plan together. The selectmen unanimously adopted it. It's up at the state now, being reviewed and having comments made. So let me just run through some of the demonstration projects that you assigned us and tell you how we're doing. Aquaculture. There's a sizable body of opinion that says oysters and other shellfish will take nitrogen out of the water effectively. Thanks to you and the voters of this town, next summer, there's gonna be up to two million little oysters in Little Pond, proving whether that works or not. Next. Eco-toilets. There's a sizable body of opinion, well-represented in this town, that says if you can get people to use a kind of toilet that keeps the feces and urine and keeps it out of the pipeline to the sewer, you don't have to have a pipeline to the sewer. This town is going to be the first one in Massachusetts to test that theory in a scientific way and finds out whether it's gonna work economically here and anywhere else. But we're doing it first. On-site denitrification. They have systems that you can put into the ground that, on each individual homeowner's site. The question is, how expensive are they? How much maintenance do they require? But they are a serious possible alternative to sewers. We're gonna find out whether they're gonna work here. Permanently reactive barriers. I didn't even know what it was two years ago. And it's not that complicated. It's a ditch near the water that you fill with woodchips. And the hope is that as the plumes of contaminated water head for the estuaries, it'll be intercepted by the woodchips, react with the woodchips, and the pollutants won't reach the estuary. Everybody's talked about these things for the last twelve years. Falmouth is gonna be the first place that puts one into the ground and proves if it works. Thanks to you and the voters of Falmouth. Road runoff. Whenever it rains, everything that's on the roads and everything that's on the lawns goes into the water, and it goes into the drains, and it goes right into the estuaries. Falmouth is going to, at least on Little Pond, address a way of making that not happen. Next. Nitrogen control bylaw is gonna come up later on tonight. If you pass the bylaw that we're proposing for you tonight, we'll be the first town on Cape Cod and probably the first town in Massachusetts to have a nitrogen control bylaw. Inlet widening. That's a proven way of dealing with nitrogen. If you open up the inlets, the flushing action makes the nitrogen come out and it increases the health of the water body. We saw it happen thirty years ago in Boines Pond. We're now looking at opening Boines Pond even wider to make it even healthier, and if that works, we'll talk about Little Pond. Once again, it's a proven way of doing it, and we're gonna come back to you in January, or in April, rather, with a specific proposal. Finally, sewer-ing. You can't ignore sewer-ing. Sewer-ing is going to be part of the solution that this town adopts. It was unanimously adopted back in 2011 by this body, and we're gonna come back to you in the spring with a specific proposal for the Little Pond area. Again, Little Pond is the most impacted by nitrogen of all the water bodies in this town for obvious reasons. It's the most densely developed area of the town, and it is, it's gonna be the one that we come in with a sewer-ing plan for. It'll be the least expensive plan we can find, and the way it's gonna be paid for remains to be seen, but we're gonna try to do it with zero percent loans or two percent loans from the state. Whatever it takes to make it as affordable as possible for the town and as affordable as possible for the neighbors who have to contribute to it. That will be what comes out of this committee. Next. Oyster pond. This is an interesting one. It's a small pond. It's only got about 200 houses that contribute to nitrogen. It'll sort of be a test case of how do you deal with smaller water bodies that are probably never gonna be on any sewer system? How do you deal with those? Because we have a bunch of them, all up and down the western side of this town. The first one to be tried out will be oyster pond, and we're gonna start with a study of that very soon. Financing. How do we pay for all this? One thing that this committee and the selectmen have all insisted on is that we try to pay for it with Mr. Boyer's windows of opportunity. The basic premise is, when you had some debt that's getting paid off, you can put on some new debt, and it won't raise your tax rate. That's been the principle that Mr. Boyer successfully led this town through for many years. That's the principle that this committee and these selectmen have adopted for any of these improvements. We're gonna be coming to you with proposals that don't increase the tax rate, but that they do leverage enough money to get the job done. The other half of that, of course, is to go to the state and borrow money at either zero percent or two percent instead of four percent, which the town would probably have to pay if we used our own borrowing capacity. And the third piece of that's gonna be betterments of some size, and at this point, we have no idea what the details of that will be, but there will be details, and we'll be back next year with those. So here's our next year's plan. April 2013 town meeting. We're gonna come and ask this town to vote a bonding authorization for design and permitting of that Little Pond lower watershed and inlet widening at Boines Pond. And there will also be included in that package other town infrastructure needs that will be met. In May, if you, at the town meeting, approve that, it'll go to the voters. They will have to approve it as well. And in August, if you approve it and they approve it, we'll submit the list of these projects to the state for funding with either, as I say, zero percent or two percent loans. This is an extraordinarily ambitious undertaking that you authorized and, in fact, ordered this town to enter into. And you're doing it for probably the most important thing we can do for ourselves in the next ten, twenty, thirty years, which is to protect the water bodies that define our town and our lives. We appreciate all the support we've gotten from you up to this point. We're gonna be back for a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the committee. Main motion to accept the report. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The report is accepted. Article Five. Article Five to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement. Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the main motion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I propose a new recommendation. I move to amend Article Five by adding the words "combined power and broadband" before the word "communication" in the third line of said article so that the article reads in its entirety. And if I may, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement on, under, through, and across Mill Road parking lot, a portion of surf drive, and a portion of surf drive beach for the installation and maintenance of a combined power and broadband communication cable to Martha's Vineyard. Upon such terms as conditions as the Board deems reasonable and proper, or do or take any other action on this matter. The amendment, Mr. Moderator in town meeting, is to include both the cable and power. Originally, it was proposed by Comcast that they would like to run an additional cable across to the vineyard, and N-Star has joined that, so it would be a combined redundant cable that would move forward to the vineyard.
Okay, so this is the main motion, as printed, adding the combined power and broadband language. Mr. Latimer.
Thank you. Just a question for the chairman. What consideration does the town get for this?
At this time, there has been no negotiations on the consideration. After this, we enter into this, went through town meeting, the town manager will be authorized to negotiate with both for some form of remuneration for the community.
Okay, Ms. Cool.
Annie Hart Cool, Precinct Six. Just wondering if those families who own property across the way have been notified of this endeavor in the event that there's any foreseeable view, problem, vista, problem, noise? I'm just trying to head this off at the pass before we have another wind turbine issue.
Mr. Chairman.
If I may, this easement will be underground, and we will have public hearings in regard to the easement before the Board of Selectmen, and we will take input on the plan from the neighbors.
Mr. Duffany.
Michael Duffany, Precinct Six. Just a quick follow-up to Ms. Cool's comments that when you're dealing with the utilities, we do have to be a little careful, because once you get the foot in the door, they have a lot more rights than a lot of us do, if you will. Anybody that's been experienced that will know that they don't have to ask permission for a lot of things. And my concern is that what happened on Elm Road about two years ago, when the utility company decided it needed some more wires either to its substation or to the vineyard, I'm not honestly sure, and they raised the poles, they put in new poles that are about 20 feet taller than the other poles, and didn't include anybody's comment whatsoever. And I just, I'm concerned, number one, that this is a new site, and I heard you say, Kevin, that, Mr. Murphy, that they wouldn't put in a pole, and if they don't, that's great. But if they do, I just, I really think that you need to involve the neighbors, because there are other poles that maybe they could piggyback on, you know, on Elm Road that are monsters. And it's just not the sort of thing that people would like to see in your front yard if it happens. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. You're all set? Okay. Mr. Stetzer.
At the Precinct Three meeting, it was brought out that they might have to put manholes in the parking lot. And that was brought up as a problem, because for one thing, you can't put any cars over it in case they need access. And the other thing in my mind is, you're putting holes in the parking lot. I think you're gonna undermine it. That, obviously, beach is fragile, and I'm concerned about what's gonna happen then. And the other thing is, they did say something about a pole, and I'm just concerned about what kind of final arrangements we're gonna wind up with. I mean, we're giving the town manager the right to actually enter into an agreement for some kind of, excuse me, remuneration, but I'd like to know what the final results are gonna be, excuse me, before I vote.
For the discussion of Article Five?
This is just a question. Didn't we just pave section of road? And if it was done with state money, aren't we barred from digging it up for five years? Or is that incorrect?
Everybody have a response to that? Yep. Peter, you wanna?
Pete McConaty, Town Engineer. All the plans that we've seen to this point do not involve any construction with utilities in the roadway. It's coming off a utility pole into the parking lot into a manhole, and then it'll be directionally drilled onto the parking lot.
Okay. Ms. Shepherd.
Susan Shepherd, Precinct One. I'm not sure who will answer this question, but is there already an existing cable there? Does it lie on the bottom of the ocean there? You said it's coming from a pole. Is that on the power that's coming down Mill Road?
Mr. Sissa.
The, to the best of my, this is a redundant cable, so there is an existing cable, but I am uncertain as to its location.
Mr. Moderator, I can answer some of that.
Mr. Swain.
Charlie Swain, Precinct One. I travel that road every day, but there's no pavement, there's new pavement there. The new pavement doesn't cover that area. And when they put in the upgrade at Elm Road, they did lay a cable on the north side of the street that goes over almost to the, that Herring River, and then out into the ocean from there. But there isn't a cable, and I'm sure they know about it, if N-Star is working with them, so they'll have to deal with that.
Mr. Latimer.
Thank you. Richard Latimer, Precinct Five. I have a question as to what compunction there is for us to do this. Is this something that we have to do? Does the utility have eminent domain that supersedes the town's eminent domain, so that we have to make this deal? And if we don't have to make this deal, what's the rush? Why can't we wait until something's negotiated, come back here? Mr. Duffany has expressed some concerns about the high-handed way that the utility company works, and what guarantee would we have that the utility company won't do that unless we have a very strong negotiating position, such as town meeting approval, that would require them, for example, to keep it underground and not do anything that would adversely affect the neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator. All of your comments will be taken into account by the Board of Selectmen. We just wanna move this forward on behalf of the folks on the vineyard who look forward to reliable service, just like we do here in this community. The Board of Selectmen understands that there would be some impact in the community, but any plan would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, and as we would move forward, we would have, again, public hearings on those plans, so we would have some comments. We would authorize, the Board of Selectmen would authorize in town meeting, for the town manager to enter into negotiations, and all of those things that you classify as heavy-handed things would be laid out in the plan before it would be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Mr. Latimer.
Thank you. Again, I hate to belabor a point, but our duty and the selectmen's duty is to the citizens of Falmouth, including the citizens who live on Mill Road, and not to the citizens of Martha's Vineyard. And therefore, we're being asked to buy a pig and a poke here. I mean, what's the rush? You can negotiate it. You can come back to Fall Town Meeting with a deal, and if it's a good deal for the town and it effectively protects our citizens, we can vote it then.
Okay. Mr. Stumpke.
Brad Stumpke, Precinct Four. There's already utility poles and power coming down Elm Road on the other side, parallely. Why do we not encourage them to use the same access to bring whatever wires or communication devices they need down where there's power lines right now?
Mr. Fenner.
To take this thing in kind of steps, might it be a good idea to amend this, to just grant the Board of Selection the power to negotiate, and then they can bring back to us what they have, rather than give them power to grant the easement?
Actually, we don't need that. They can negotiate currently, and then they could come back for the approval to grant after. So they already have the legal authority to negotiate currently. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The opinion of the chair is that there is not a two-thirds majority. Is there any challenge to the chair? Hearing none, the article does not pass. Article Seven. Article Seven is the nitrogen control bylaw. Board of Selectmen for a new main motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator in town meeting.
Okay, folks, let's go. Article Seven. Listen to the new main motion.
If we have this motion, it would be helpful if we could put this up while I make this new motion. I'd like to, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, would like to change all section letters from A to H to numbers one through eight. Change all subsection numbers in the new Section Five to letters A to E. Change the new subsection four to read, "The application of nitrogen is prohibited within 100 feet of the resource areas as defined in the Falmouth Wetlands Regulation W, pardon me, FWR 10 dot oh-two." Change the new subsection five to read, "Application of fertilizer to golf courses..." Change the new subsection five to read, "Application of fertilizer to golf courses except that any application of nitrogen on greens or fairways within the resource areas referenced in Section 4D shall comply with the recommendations set forth in Section Six and shall use 85% or higher slow-release water insoluble nitrogen in organic or inorganic form." And then finally, change the enforcement officer in the new Section Seven to the Director of Natural Resources or his designee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can we get one more copy of that over here, please? Okay, any questions on the new main motion? Let's do questions on the main motion. The numbers to letters, oh, excuse me, letters to numbers, and then numbers to letters, and then the 100-foot resource setback, and then changing the golf course exemption and the enforcement officer exemption. Mr. Hampson?
George Hampson, Precinct Five. Mr. Moderator, I have a second amendment that I'd like to offer, which would be beneficial to this project. And that is, my feeling is that things are going to change in Falmouth as far as growing seasons and so forth. It's happened already, starting last year. I was planting grass seed in February, and I had it growing in March. And there was, actually, I used yew grass on top of the seed to accomplish this. So what I'm suggesting, under D, I don't know if the same, but this is changed, performance standards, I'm suggesting an amendment. The application of nitrogen is prohibited between October 16 and April 14. What I'm suggesting is that the person in charge, the Department of Natural Resources, has the ability to adjust this rate in the future. It's only common sense, it'll only be good business for the future, and I can tell you what we're going to have on Cape Cod is going to be a climate of North Carolina before that we're done. And so that's what I have. My amendment says, "No fertilizer application between October 16 and April unless specifically designated by the Town Department of Natural Resources of the Board of Selectmen." And I say this in a positive way. I'm on the same team. I do a lot of water quality in McGansett and West Falmouth. It's part of my life. So I'm going to give you the amendment, sir.
You got that in writing? Thank you. Okay, so what used to be D, which is now number four, this is where Mr. Hampson wants to add the amendment. "No fertilizer application between October 16 and April unless specifically designated by the Town Department of Natural Resources or the Board of Selectmen." Discussion on the amendment. So the slide that's up there is the new main motion, and Mr. Hampson's amendment is the first amendment on the article. Okay? So discussion on the amendment. Mr. Turkington?
Eric Turkington, Precinct One, Water Quality Committee. We promised to come back. I didn't think it would be quite this soon, but we're back. Mr. Hampson's motion, the committee has not had the opportunity to review that, but I don't think the committee would have any objection to adopting Mr. Hampson's amendment. It seems to fall within the intent of what the bylaw is trying to do.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, the question will come on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Do you guys have it unanimous? Discussion on the main motion.
On the main motion, Cia Karplos, who's worked closely with the committee on drafting this, is here and would be able to and willing to go through a section-by-section analysis of this if the meeting wants to, and also capable and willing to answer any questions if the meeting so desires.
Okay. Any questions on the main motion as amended?
Bob Young, Precinct Five. I don't really have a question for Eric or his associate, but I do want to speak in support of this article. I'm your representative on the Golf Commission and the chairman of the committee, and I'm in favor of this amended article put forth by Selectmen and ask for your support. We will protect recharge areas while the same area golf courses, including our own town course, can abide by this bylaw. Area course superintendents are aware of the issues in the recharge areas, and they agree to follow the new bylaw guidelines as shown in the amended article. I've spoken to several, and even before this came up, they've already taken steps to protect the recharge areas and organic fertilizers and things of that nature. So I'd support this amendment and ask for your vote.
Further discussion on Article Seven. Hearing none, the question will, no, yep. Got a question?
Joe Marshall, Precinct Nine. My question comes to the recommendations. I was curious to know where .5 pounds per 1,000 square feet and 1 pound, you know, over the course of a season came from?
Mr. Chairman?
There's a program called Falmouth Friendly Lawns that was enacted several years ago and ran for a number of years. And the 1 pound per 1,000 square feet per season and the half a pound per single application came from those guidelines.
Mr. Soares? Well, no, 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 no. I recognize Mr. Soares.
Reginald Soares, Precinct Nine. Going further with the recommendation of the use of the nitrogen, I think most of the recommendations are a good idea. And I would like to use, if I may, make an amendment because using this recommendation in place of Performance Standard 4D because of the following reasons. I think I understand our attempts to regulate nitrogen. However, no nitrogen at all is detrimental, only in that I'm concerned that it would cause degradation of the lawns, which are often used as play areas. I fear that this could lead to soil runoff into the ponds that we're trying to save. Healthy grass holds soil and produces oxygen. I think most of these measures are all good, and I agree with them. I think if we, the recommendation's saying that we use a half a pound of nitrogen per 1,000 square feet is good. And I'd like to make the amendment that we use this recommendation, again, in place of Performance Standard 4D. I think responsible use of nitrogen may, as I say, avoid degradation of lawn areas.
So you want to strike 4D and insert the language from the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The requirements of 4D are to prohibit any nitrogen application in a very specific area, and that area is 100 feet from a resource area. Lawns that are located within 100 feet of that resource area have a couple of options for actually inputting nitrogen. One is recycling of grass clippings. When you recycle grass clippings, you actually add about a pound of nitrogen per 1,000 square feet per year. The other thing you can do is use a compost top dressing, and that will similarly input nitrogen to lawns that are located in that resource area, but will not require the application of a separate fertilizer. The grass clippings and the top dressing of compost are a slow-release, slow-release way to achieve any nitrogen input without having to fertilize on top of it. And that's why the regulation is written this way.
Mr. Soares?
Thank you again, Reginald Soares. I agree with the mulching the lawn clippings, but constantly top dressing a lawn, and I had Falmouth Friendly, people asked me this years ago, to see, was it practical? I thought about it. I said, no, unfortunately, it's not practical. You would raise the level of lawns over years. Lawns already with the thatch get higher. We see a lot of cottages that the lawns are already higher in elevation than the base of the house themselves. Top dressing, unfortunately, is not practical. It's very hard to do. There are machines there are making now to top dress lawns. They're like old manure spreaders in lawnmowers. $3,000 for these machines. But ultimately, my point is that you raise the level of the lawn, and it's very hard to top dress a lawn without smothering out some of the lawn itself. You have to be very careful. But again, I emphasize, my main concern is, you do raise the elevation of the lawn by constantly top dressing it, and that is a big concern on elevation towards the wood shingles of a house. So no, top dressing is not a great, unfortunately, is not a great option. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Soares' point is well-taken. I think that the language that we're talking about here addresses only within 100 feet of a wetland or an estuary. It's not the entire lawn. And I will tell you how this piece got in and why the committee feels so strongly about it. When we were first created, we took a boat ride with the town harbor master through most of the estuaries in the East Falmouth area. And every one of us was dumbstruck by the greenness of the lawns of the large houses that have been built along those water bodies. I think so many of us live in this town, and we think, you know, there's small cottages here and there, and that's not the way it is along most of our estuaries now. There are large houses with extremely green, extremely cultivated lawns right down to the edge of the water. You know, they've wiped out all the natural vegetation, and they clearly fertilize like crazy. And the point of this bylaw is to say, in that 100-foot strip right next to the water, you can't do that.
Mr. Donahue? Did you have something? Yeah, let's get the microphone, let's get the microphone first.
Are we talking about the amended motion?
We're talking about Mr. Soares' amendment right now, which is to strike 4D and insert the language from the recommendation section of a half a pound of nitrogen per 1,000 square feet.
What happened to Mr. Murphy's?
That's not an amendment. That was the main motion. So you have to deal with the amendment.
I'm sorry. I thought that was an amendment.
So we'll go back to that after Mr. Soares' amendment is dispensed with. Yep. Mr. Patrick?
Matt Patrick, Precinct Seven, Water Quality Management Committee. I just wanted to remind everyone here that we're going to undergo a tremendous expense to remove nitrogen, all forms of human nitrogen, from our watershed to meet the total maximum daily loads. It seems like a minor detail to ask our folks who have green, you want to fertilize their lawns, to limit that within 100 feet of a water body. I know plenty of people, I'm one of them, I've never fertilized my lawn, the grass is doing fine, and I guess they call that a Cape Cod lawn. So let's move on. I say no on this amendment.
Mr. Hampson?
George Hampson, Precinct Five. In order to make this work, folks, we have to make some changes. We can't continue on the same pattern that we've been doing in the past. We should have a buffer zone between the house and the water's edge. Why? Because it not only is a way of having natural plants in that area, but it protects the land in case of flooding. And I got news for you, we're going to have more flooding in the future also. So we've got to make changes. And I can't stress more than let this committee do what they've proposed, because it's only going to help us in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Latimer?
I would just like to remind everyone that the reason we have this bylaw before us is because we have a real problem with nitrogen pollution, and we have to get a handle on it. Mr. Soares has offered a hypothetical issue of, well, maybe some people with kids want to let their kids play on the grass, blah, blah, blah. Well, that's not a good reason to exempt anybody on a hypothetical when we're dealing with a real problem as serious as the nitrogen problem that we have, and it's getting worse. Thank you.
Mr. Neto?
Joe Neto, Precinct Nine. Question for the chairman, Mr. Turkington. Did I miss something? There's no penalty. I mean, we, I've supported the article, so I turned my neighbor in for putting the nitrogen. Was it a penalty?
You're quite right. There is no penalty. There is an enforcement, and there is a bylaw, and with your help, Joe, we'll put a penalty in the next time.
And there are penalties for infractions of the general bylaw, so if this is in the general bylaw, it should be subject to the general penalty. Is that correct, Mr. Duffy?
Fifty dollars.
Okay. So it would be subject to the general penalty for violation of the bylaw. Okay. So the question will come on the amendment, Mr. Soares' amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? The opinion of the chair is that the noes have it by a majority, and we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Bothner, Precinct Two. My question has to do with the enforcement. We often pass these kinds of provisions, and they sound very, very good, but then there's always the problem of how they're going to be enforced. Has that been carefully codified so that, I can see there's a zoning enforcement, Director of Natural Resources, who's going to be the enforcement authority, but what form is that going to take? Because without enforcement, we know well that people, many people, will just ignore this bylaw. Thank you.
Anybody want to address enforcement?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman?
Like every other bylaw we passed, I expect it's going to be complaint-driven, and neighbors will see when someone's violating the bylaw and will report it, and the town enforcement agencies will come out, and that's how every other bylaw in this town is enforced, and I expect that's how this one will be.
Mr. Stetcher?
Faces has been pushing Falmouth Friendly Lawns for years. It's basically the same thing that is being proposed now. It has worked for people who have complied voluntarily with this thing, and it could certainly work for the rest of the town. I don't think, and it's like people told not to water every other day, or things like that, or not to water after 7 o'clock. I think there are enough, there's going to be exceptions to everything. You're going to find people who are going to ignore it, but I think by far, the vast majority will go along with it.
But I think by far, the vast majority will go along with it. Thank you.
Mr. Scher?
Dan Scher, Precinct 6. I want you to vote for this. I've been asking for this and I asked friendly laws to bring something like this up for years. And I really think it's important. We have to prove to the people we're really serious about this whole situation. This is one step in doing it. About enforcement, if anybody knows our Director of National Resources, I think he will get some respect. I have to look up to him like this. The other thing, my question is, how are we going to notify the summer people of this? Are we going to put it in a -- if, and I hope it is passed, are we going to put it in their water bill? Or how are we going to get a notice out to everybody? Because I think that's the most important thing. Because what you're going to hear is, "I never heard of this. I never saw it." Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? For those of you who've opened your water bill in the last couple of weeks, you've seen, we've already started delivering messages through water bills. And in fact, this current water bill has a message in it about eco-toilets and about fertilizer use. So yes, it's a preferred vehicle by this committee to get the word out. And we send the water bill out twice a year. So the next time there's a water bill, we can certainly make sure that everybody knows there is a bylaw and here's what it says and here's what you have to do.
Let's not forget the folks that are still on well as well. Because there's a lot of well water around watersheds in Falmouth. Okay? Any further discussion? Yep. One more and then we'll take a vote.
Joe Marshall, Precinct 9. You know, I am an accredited organic land care professional. I practice it professionally and personally. I'm a firm believer in organics. My biggest thing right now is obviously is with the enforcement. Our DNR is a great department. They do a lot of things for this town. I just don't think that there's enough personnel to back this. I mean, the amount of hats that the DNR wears nowadays is ridiculous. And you want them to go around and chase people after a heavy rain? That's pretty open-ended. Who would -- what do you consider a heavy rain? You want them to go out in between April 14th and October 16th? That's when this town is at the most hoppingest. I mean, I've been practicing landscaping. I've been landscaping for 18 years. I don't know every bag of fertilizer, nor do I know the calibration settings on every spreader that's going to tell me what is a half a pound or a pound. You know, there's a lot of training with a limited amount of staff. I just don't see how this is really going to be enforced.
All right. This is a general bylaw, so it's a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it by a majority. Can we get one more in under our belt before we go? The chair will take a vote whether or not to do one more article before we leave. To stay for one more article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
I'm not going to count it. See you tomorrow night.